Welcome to the November thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen City Council meeting. I have a roll call, please.
Mayor Webb?
Here.
Mayor Protan Aubrey?
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Here.
Councilmember Akuro?
Here.
Councilmember Holland?
Here.
Takes us to the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Holy Spirit, source of all life, we gather together as the elected officials of our community, charged by the people, to discern our future together. We are a diverse body brought together by the same Spirit. We pray that we would be faithful to the work at hand, to set aside our own personal agendas, to seek out the greater good. Open our minds and our hearts to listen in for your will for us, and bestow upon us your wisdom and grace. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, we need an approval of the agenda. I've been informed that we want to, that they want to take item fourteen, fifteen, and eighteen off the consent agenda. With those being removed, is there any other changes to the agenda from administrative?
Item three.
Item three on?
On administrative reports is a non-action item. That's for informational purposes.
All right, so we'll remove those. Any?
I move approval, Mr. Mayor, of the agenda as revised.
Support.
Any dissension? Hearing none. We have an agenda. Civic announcements. Anyone out there wanting to come up and give us some civic announcements? Come on up.
Hello. I just wanted to update you on our recent Ruck twenty-two march, which was this weekend. It was a march that was put on in cooperation with the city of Royal Oak and the city of Ferndale. And basically, it was to bring awareness to veteran suicide and the epidemic that's occurring in this country. I wanted to report that a hundred and thirty people participated, and it was really cold, but it was really fun, and I think we did well, and we have a lot of non-perishable items that we were able to donate. And everyone that came seemed to either be a veteran, know a veteran, and I think everyone enjoyed themselves. Additionally, there is one new program that, or excuse me, an event that is coming up. It's not often that adaptive recreation is brought to Hazel Park, or opportunities for that. We have partnered with Oakland County Parks and Recreation and Jardon Vocational School. And Hazel Park Recreation will be hosting a Snowflake Social, which was basically a dance in the evening for students from Jardon. And it's for all individuals with disabilities from ages eighteen to twenty-six. So that's a new event, and that will be held on December sixth, from six to eight P.M. in the Rec Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other civic announcements from the audience?
Okay, Counsel, do we have any civic announcements you want to bring up? I just wanted to let everybody know that this Tuesday, at the Hazel Park Ice Arena, there is a tree lighting ceremony that starts at six?
Six fifteen.
Come on out, bring the kiddies, have some fun, enjoy yourself. We have, we'll have Sano there for all the kiddies to talk to and give them their little lists, as long as they haven't been naughty.
Mayor Webb will be leading the community in Christmas carols again.
You had to bring that up. But anyways, any other civic announcements from the council?
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes.
Uh, two, excuse me, Thursday, the fifteenth, from six to eight P.M., the Hazel Park Historical Museum at forty-five East Pearl will be open. We've got some new acquisitions, and we have a real cool fundraiser going on there. The phone that's on the wall that you normally take off and talk into like this rings now. So if it rings and you answer it, you have to donate a dollar.
That's pretty catchy. Anything else?
Tuesday, December fourth, Saint Justin's Church, Project Blue Light.
Thank you.
To honor our police and firefighters. Last year, we had a hundred percent turnout from our city council. It was a great turnout, and it's a great event to come together to remember our first responders who've made the ultimate sacrifice. So I want to thank Father Bob and the members of our police department and our fire department who participate in this important event. We draw law enforcement officers from all over the state, so it's a, it's a very nice event. If you've never been, I encourage you to come and to show up.
Any other public announcements? I will close civic announcements, moving to public discussion. Anyone from the audience like to come up and give a public discussion about any particular topic or that they would like? Seeing no one, I close public discussion. Takes us down to special presentations from Stuart Sherman.
Mr. Mayor, it is my distinct pleasure to introduce Mr. Stuart Sherman, who is here tonight on behalf of the Sutar Sutarak Meyer Foundation. Those of you who've been on council know who they are. They have, in the past, sponsored programs for senior chores. They've sponsored, they sponsored a police officer one year when our budget was tight, and recently, they've given hundreds of thousands of dollars to fund the Hazel Park Promise Zone. Without their support, the Hazel Park Promise Zone never would have been possible. So we're here today, and because the foundation has a deep and longstanding commitment to Hazel Park, Mr. Sherman is here to announce some even more exciting new projects that they will be funding in the future.
I do want to say thank you for supporting our kids all these years, Suta Promise Zone. Appreciate it.
Again, when you write the history of Hazel Park in this time period, the Sutar Sutarak Meyer Foundation will be such an important part of that.
Yeah.
And Mr. Stuart Sherman has been the driving force behind a lot of the support that Hazel Park has gotten. He is truly an unsung hero in our community, for our community, so without further delay, I'll stop talking.
The mic is yours.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to be here in front of you tonight. I seem to be a city council junkie. I was at my own commission meeting last night. So I understand exactly what you do, and thank you for your service to the community. The community wouldn't function as it does without you, without your fine city manager, without Mr. Campbell. I met your city attorney just recently, and you've got a great team here. I congratulate you on that. And it's for, that's part of the reason that the Sutar Sutarak Meyer Foundation has continued to provide the support to encourage you as a community to continue reinvesting in yourself. In the past, we have donated a considerable amount of money to the Promise Zone, and we are continuing that in the coming year. We have authorized a grant of ninety thousand dollars to the Hazel Park Promise Zone. In addition, we have authorized a twenty-five thousand dollar challenge grant, which is a matching grant. The Promise Zone, for every dollar that the Promise Zone raises from an outside contributor, we will match that dollar for dollar up to twenty-five thousand dollars. So the, the commitment from the foundation this year is a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars towards the Promise Zone, encouraging kids to go to college, get an education, and come back, resettle into this community, and really take this community to new places. But to do that, we have to look at other opportunities. What else can we do? How can we help Hazel Park? So we have done two different things, and I'm going to start with the, it's not more mundane, but it's things that people may not pay attention to in their everyday life. And that is, over the last year or so, a lot of the street trees have died and been removed, or they've been trimmed down and they're dying. It's the age of the community. It's happening to all of the inner circle communities. We all have the same problem. I spoke to your city manager one day when I was in town, and I said, "What are you doing about this?" He said, "Well, we have to do something." It's, but I said, "What if the foundation offered a grant for you to replace your city trees that you're cutting down?" He thought that was a great idea. Talked to your D.P.W., and they thought it was a great idea. So the board came up with a program to start, we've authorized fifteen thousand dollars towards city trees in the right-of-way. If there is community support for that, because there are, we want to make sure that the neighbors that are going to have that tree are going to take care of that tree, that there's going to be, they're going to be watered, that they're not going to take a weed whip and, and damage the bark, and to the point where the tree dies. If there's buy-in, we've authorized up to ninety thousand dollars to continue that, to replace these trees. It's a quality of life issue. Those trees make your city walkable. They create an environment, and that's what we're trying to do. Each of the programs that we've done is, as we, we spend a lot of time thinking about things that we can, and I should tell you that one of the things that we do as a foundation is we want every dollar to count. We could give money to the Cancer Society, the...
All the other charities?
All the other charities, but our dollars would just go into a pool then, where we're looking for dollars that are going to make a difference. They're going to make a difference in someone's life, and that's what we're trying to do. And that brings me to the reason I think I'm here tonight. The people on the Sutar Sutarak Meyer Foundation are very interested in active communities. That's, one of the members of the board has a community garden that he established in Chicago. So there's this desire for an active and an engaged community. There's a park in town named after the Sutar Sutarak Meyer families, and that's very nice, and we're very appreciative of that. It was not necessary, we appreciate it, but what we want to do is create a park that will become a destination for this community, that people are going to want to, not only from Hazel Park, but from surrounding communities, come in and enjoy the amenities. I've had the privilege of, of working on such a park, and I have suggested to your city manager, and I know that your, I don't remember your name.
Serene.
Serene. I spoke with Serene, and she has been in touch with a company called Leather, Leathers and Associates. They are a company that comes into the community, meets with the community, meets with the kids in the community, to find out what is attracting them, what would really get their interest and take them outside into these parks. And then they design it based on what the kids are thinking, not, not something that an adult is coming up with, but what did the kids think? What was in their mind? And to do this, we have authorized a preliminary grant of twenty-five thousand dollars, which should get you started. If it's a little more than that, we'll authorize more than that. And we've authorized a preliminary budget to renovate Scout Park using this system, and I don't know if that's been shown to anyone, the information from this Leathers? No, it hasn't. Make sure that you see it. It is outstanding, what they do. We, we have authorized a preliminary budget of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for you to renovate this park. And to create something that will attract people in your community, get them outside, get them active, get them socializing, just add another, another thing with all the new restaurants and what's going on with the racetrack and the redevelopment there, give you just something else to try to just take you to the next level.
This is a big win for our residents. Thank you.
We're really excited. We are really excited to partner with you. I would tell you, it has been, it is a pleasure working with your city manager. Anything that I ask for, or that the foundation asks for, we get very quickly. He's made my job as a liaison much easier, and I want to share that with you.
Thank you.
We look, we look forward to working with you on this.
I'd like to give you a hand, because this is a great, great gesture towards our community. And we dearly appreciate it.
Well, it's my pleasure to be here. It's my pleasure to sit on this foundation's board and to really satisfy the, the goals of the, of Bill Sutar, as far as working in a community to make it a better place for its residents. And I, I hope that we've done that.
Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I could, I could spend all night talking about the visionary leadership of my wonderful friend Stuart Sherman, but I just want to say on behalf of everyone, thank you, thank you, thank you. Because this really has the potential to change our city for the positive. If you haven't seen the park that we're modeling this after, it's Booth Park in Birmingham, where Stuart's on the city commission. It's an extraordinary park, and it has options for entertainment for kids of all ages. And it really is just a, just a beautiful place that the kids themselves participated in the design. And we walked it, what, back in the spring, I think, we took a walk to Booth Park, and it may have been. So, so this has been, this has been in the cooker for a while, but it's bearing fruit now, and again, huge thank you to the foundation.
Thank you again. We have a special, special presentation for Curtis Kitchen and Bath. Are anyone here from Curtis Kitchen? Come on up. Our resolution is, whereas Curtis Kitchen and Bath has an outstanding reputation for excellence in the home improvement industry, and whereas Curtis Kitchen and Bath is also a civic-minded company that regularly gives of his talent and resources to make the metro-Detroit community a better place, and whereas the Curtis Kitchen and Bath recognizes the kitchen in the Hazel Park Recreation Department building was obsolete and in poor condition, and whereas Curtis Kitchen and Bath generously donated and installed free of charge a new kitchen, cupboards, fixtures in the kitchen in the Hazel Park Recreation Center, greatly improving the appearance and functionality of the facility, and whereas the gesture of all, the more generous, because Curtis Kitchen and Bath just recently donated a brand-new kitchen to Hazel Park Fire Department as well, and thank you. Therefore, it be resolved, the City Hazel Park and Council hereby honors Curtis Kitchen and Bath, and we thank the company for the generosity, donating of the new kitchen to the fire and the recreation department. And gentlemen, thank you.
Would you like to say a few, again, thank you. That, I started working at the recreation department when I was in high school, nineteen-eighty-one, and that kitchen was the same kitchen that you...
It's pretty bad.
And changed out, so thank you very much. It's just awesome what you've done.
I don't know what it is about Hazel Park, but I just love this place, so.
Well, we love you. Thanks. That's awesome stuff.
Thank you very much.
It was easy when it was asked, and it was a pleasure to do, and I just, you know, it sounds like everything's going to be used considerably.
Yes, will be used.
It's our pleasure to do it, so thank you, guys.
Appreciate you, all the hard work. Thank you. Thank you very much. Counsel, I need an approval of the consent agenda as revised.
Move approval of the revised consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Do I have support?
I'll support with discussion.
Discussion on the consent agenda. Counsel?
So, the items I'd like to discuss is three, four, five, and twenty-two, but if we can start with three and four together for the two business licenses, for Elite Blue Delivery Services and Professional Delivery Service. Are those businesses here?
There is a representative from one of the delivery services.
Okay, so I just wanted to take the opportunity, while you're here, we, we've had discussions with Ashley Capital, we've had discussions with Amazon, we have all been plagued by numerous phone calls and emails and text messages from the residents of the city with concern over the white vans that, that are peering up at every gas station down the side streets. There's been a lot of concerns about safety, so we just wanted, I, I just wanted to make it, you know, known that we're, we're very concerned about this issue, we're, we're paying close attention to this issue, and to please communicate to your drivers, to please respect the traffic laws and the rules that the city set forth for the protection of its residents. I myself was almost involved in a head-on collision with one of the drivers who crossed a double yellow line into a turn lane that they were not supposed to be in, just so they could go to Tim Hortons. So this, this type of stuff is, it's not safe, it's not acceptable. We're happy to have you here, we're happy that you are providing jobs for people, but we want to make sure that the residents of the city are safe. So please make sure that your employees are aware of, you know, the concerns that we have. So I just want to take the opportunity with you, you here, to do face-to-face instead of it trickling down through, you know, Amazon and everybody, so, but that said, I, I do support this license.
Any other discussion?
I appreciate it. I have to talk every morning to my drivers about safety. We have a morning meeting, and we give safety tips before embarking on this venture. I was twenty years at DPS, and we took pride in being a great delivery company there, and I learned a lot about safety and what you do out there on the road, and if any of you would love to come in and see what we do in the mornings, and come over to a professional delivery service station and see my drivers, and I'm constantly thinking about safety and giving safety tips when we're out there on the road, and not to do some of the things that I know some of the drivers do do, but I only speak for professional delivery service, and we take the utmost, you know, as far as when it comes to safety, as far as driving, and take that to heart, and I most definitely tell my drivers every morning about safety.
Which company is it that you work for?
Our own professional delivery service.
So sir, I just want you to be aware, so the idea of partly granting you the business license and wanting subcontracted companies to get a business license is, we expect you to hold your drivers accountable for these things, but if you do not hold your drivers accountable, we will be holding you accountable. And that's, that's part of the reason for this, is we want you guys, because a lot of promises have been made over the last year, and we just want to see action, show us that there's improvement. I had a meeting with Amazon yesterday, and I understand you probably had a meeting with them this morning, all the DPS drivers. Yeah, so we just want to make sure we're all moving forward on the same page. Everyone wants their packages delivered, but everyone wants to live when, to get the package, so that's basically the idea.
Standards, time restraints on your, on your job, and your job can be a little overwhelming sometimes, but we do have main thoroughfares like Ten Mile and John R. that would be, instead of using the neighborhood for a cut-through, we would appreciate if we wouldn't.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I may follow up on your comments. The mayor's, I think the biggest problem we have are, you know, they go to the gas station, they cut through the side streets and things like that, make sure they stay on the main roads unless there's actually a package to be delivered in that, on that street or in that subdivision, those drivers should not be using side streets as a cut-through. And that's been, I think, most of the problem, that and traveling at an unsafe speed, and disregarding traffic control devices, and I know there's time constraints, but please, we're, we're very serious, we don't want to have a tragedy here.
I would suggest that the mayor, council, manager, city manager, that maybe establish something for all the owners to come in.
And I want to commend you for being here tonight, too, in person, yourself, I think that's a very good...
We're not beating up on you, we just...
Just happened to be here.
We just happened to be here while we...
You had the courage and the, the common sense to come here and show up tonight, and we appreciate it.
We've had a lot of text messages, phone calls, emails over this whole issue for the last six to ten months. It's been pretty rough.
Personal experiences, too. I almost got clipped coming out of the D.P.W., and, you know, heading back to the bar in Cousins is not a freeway.
So, you know, we're trying to work with you as well, so let's see if we can work together on this and move forward, and just let all your people know.
I would most definitely do that, as a professional delivery service and any other drivers that's driving, you know, right away, I'll let their owners know, or their managers know, and, you know, hopefully we can all work together and work together on this and make sure everybody's safe out there on the road.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wanted discussion on five and twenty-two as well?
Is the owner for Zarathustra our coin here tonight? Okay, I was hoping they were going to be here, I just had some questions.
Do you want to elaborate on this?
So this is a business license for an art gallery, which I think is absolutely phenomenal to have an art gallery in the city, but I was just hoping to get some additional information about, instead of art gallery, what type of art? Is it going to be open to the public? Is it event-specific? Let them know we do have an arts council in town, so that we can welcome them to, to come to a meeting, so we can get acquainted, introduced. I see some great partnerships that we could have. We do have their contact information, so I will, I will reach out privately.
They will be actually holding, hopefully, some art classes and doing some actual fabrication of art in the facility.
Awesome.
Would they be doing anything else, being that they're open till one A.M.?
No, I, I'll figure that out. It might be sort of an event thing, way, way, gallery sort of thing, but there's going to be no, I'll put on there, I can amend the business license to include, you know, sort of noise ordinance, alcohol, stuff like that, make sure we're covering ourselves.
Okay. I have a list here, another item, did you?
Chief, did you want to talk a little bit about the body cameras, and then I, then a resident wanted to speak, or?
And I got some residents that want to talk on a couple.
On eight and nine? Yes, I'm sorry, chief, go ahead.
Go ahead.
You got questions about the body cams?
How are they working?
Oh, they are working very good, very...
Certainly, we had the discussion in detail about a year ago.
They are working good. I think they have resolved some false allegations against our officers already. So that, I think that's forwarded some lawsuits, and they are helping us, for sure, civil rights complaints, that kind of thing.
Do you feel that just the body cameras alone are going to do that, or do we need to supplement a car camera along with this? Is there any other technicalities we need to?
I think for, for the most part, I think the body cams do cover a lot, that the cars can't. There is an added cost, if that's a question. We did check into that for the car cameras, it'd be additional, a hundred and seven thousand. So it's, it's quite a bit more.
Yeah.
So, and we're still, we're still learning, getting used to things, as far as our Freedom of Information Act and the time that it takes to get that information, and get the things voided out of it, and what's the word that I?
Redacted.
Redacted, that's it. Thank you.
The work, and thank you, Counselwoman.
It does take a lot of time, so there's some costs that way also.
Counsel, Chris and Aubrey had another question.
So with the, the total cost of this contract, is this, is this what we anticipated it to be last year, when we signed up for the trial?
I think it's, it might be less. One thing that I don't believe is in there, we did apply for a wrap grant, we did get that, it's not a, a ton, but it's twenty-four hundred a year, and then you have to reapply every year after that. So roughly, a little over sixteen thousand a year, over the five years. And after two years, we get new equipment also, so that's, that's nice.
I'm assuming, this was in the budget we approved this summer, I, sorry, I didn't have time to go back and check, check that. Okay, so...
Our, our free trial is coming to an end here shortly, so...
And then, is this with county prosecutor and everybody, this is going to be, this is all compatible with everything that the state and county level and everybody else is using to access our data and everything?
Yes, we're in compliance with what's out there. This is still new to the state of Michigan, and a lot of cities are not using it yet, so as far as certain standards, there, there isn't any at, at this point.
Okay, are we, are we locked into, it looks like it's a five-year contract, are we locked into that, or if we decide in a couple of years that this is just absolutely horrible, or a better product comes on the market, are we able to get out of this contract?
I believe we are, but I, I will check into that to make sure. I would guess it'd probably be prorated, but I think that's kind of the way it is right now.
Have you run any glitches that you may see in the foreseeable future being an issue as far as legal process?
I, I don't foresee any at this point, I just... I just, we're still trying to figure out what kind of costs we are going to have as far as the FOIs and redacting, that kind of thing. We're staying on top of it so far. I believe the prosecutor's office is going to have, they want those things available too, so there's a process in place for that, too.
Any other questions for the police chief on this issue from the council? Any other comments from you, chief?
No, I, I do think they're a good thing and if you support it, I'm thankful, I think they are good for us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, may I please address the issue of the body worn cameras as the prosecutor? I have had great success with the body worn cameras that the officers have provided for me as the prosecutor. And working along with the police has been a very efficient and effective tool. I have seen firsthand how it has protected the city, the officers, and, and the residents themselves, too, and others. So I highly support the body worn cameras for the overall safety and welfare for the city, its officers, and all the public.
Thank you. I have two people, somebody, AIG Holdings and Adam Gardner is, wants to speak on.
Eight and nine?
Eight and nine. Please come up.
Hi, good evening. So a little history, our company, AIG Holdings, recently added about 30 to 40 new properties in Hazel Park over the last few months. And we are still kind of learning all the processes and getting to know all the city staff. And amongst these properties that we've purchased, we've come across 134 East Maple Dale and 1244 East Granite. And apparently there is, there has been a demo order for both these properties. And I am requesting a bit of a delay on that so our architect can go through it, do proper drawings, and do any demolition that needs to be done in-house as opposed to awarding it out. We've just finished our drawings for 1045 East Jarvis, which is going to be our next project. We are, we were the ones who also sold, I don't know if you know, 751 East Muir, one of the highest selling houses in Hazel Park in quite some time. So we're just asking for a bit of time so my architect, who is here with us, can complete his drawings and we can go through the whole city process to get these projects started, right?
Administration? This is new to me. Adam, are you planning, you're going to demo the houses, correct?
So.
And you're going to demo, because there's a demo order, so they've got to be demoed.
So let me speak individually, so 1244 East Granite, 100%, that will need to be demolition, that's a horrible house. 134 East Maple Dale, I know there's a demo order on it, I went in there, I walked through it. I think the, there is some bones that can be salvaged, I think the second floor needs to be chopped up and then kind of rebuilt up like what we did at Muir. But we don't know exactly, we just, we need the time to get in there, there was some obstruction to the basement so we could see all the, all the structural elements. If it, if, if it can be salvaged and, and done right, then we'd like to keep whatever we can. If it needs to come down, then we will certainly take it down as per our plan.
How long have you owned this property?
We've owned it, I think, about two to three months. And we bought it at the auction.
So you're going to catch 22 at this point, and you're asking for a state of, state of stay?
Just stays to give us a little bit of time to.
I have a question.
Sure.
For the city attorney. My question is if they, we have these demo orders already on these properties when they were purchased. If he's asking for the potential of saving part of 134 East Maple Dale if he feels that's available or able to do, what is the legal standing of that since there is already a demo order on that? My concern.
Well, at this particular point, the demo order was approved by city council some time ago.
Right.
And the city council does have the ability to, three out of five, make a decision. I would like to see perhaps these bid, these award bids, if it's for demolition, if, if Mr. Gardner was to talk with Jaff to find out about that 1244. But at the end of the day, this is already approved, it's already been ordered, it's been approved by council many, many months ago. It was purchased subject to the demo approval. So I think that it would be appropriate for us to give balance to what he's requesting, but also we have to respect the fact that Mr. Gardner and his AIG Holdings purchased it subject to knowing it was ordered for demo.
Full knowledge.
So I, I think, I think that at the end of the day, the demo is what's really important. I'm sorry, Mr. Gardner, but.
Yeah, I think it's got to get demoed based on what we've done. You had the public hearing, it went, people had an opportunity to address council, council made its decision at that point in time. I think that it's going to have to be demoed. It's up to council whether or not they want to, you know.
Well, I think the residents have had to endure this for a while as well.
That is a true statement.
Oh, it's been years.
It's been years, I'm, I'm the new owner and I'm coming.
I'm sorry.
I totally get it.
And I said you were a catch 22.
My, my, my only, my only, the demo may happen, the demo could happen. And even if you want, you say that the demo needs to happen, that's fine, too. All I'm saying is let it be part of our package to get it all done in one shot as opposed to hiring someone outside as well.
Through the chair, that, that was going to be my question, if he can get a better price, that's acceptable.
If he can do that, again, I don't have an issue with that, but I, I, I think you need to put a timeframe on it.
Yeah.
Thirty days.
So, so you want me to submit a bid for the demolition?
We're expecting you, if you, you own this property?
Yes.
So you don't need to give us a bid, okay? You own the property, demolish it. So you get the best bids that you can get, because you're the property owner, you want to demo it on your own. We'll give you a stay.
But I believe the applicant needs to have the permit pulled to the demo within 10 days. So we know whether or not to pursue our.
Right.
Which is only good for so long.
Right.
That was my next question, is once the demo permit is, is, is issued, how long do you have for actual demolition?
Usually it takes about 45 days.
You got to get the utilities off if they aren't already.
Up to.
It's big, you know.
So if you have a permit pulled within the next 10 days, and you're telling us that you're going to take care of the demo at your cost, and it may be considerably less than what we're.
Exactly.
Pardon me.
Excuse us, Lynn?
I'm Lynn with the Building Department. I do have all the wrecking clearances on both of these properties.
You do?
Yep, DTE, consumers and water.
It's already done.
Okay, so all utilities are off.
She's efficient.
Sorry.
That is a help.
She's awesome.
He is awesome.
Let, let us, as the council, make a decision here and we'll get back with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, let's go to these two properties on eight and nine of the consent agenda. Council, what'd be your pleasure? Do you want to continue with this, or do you want to make an amendment to these two properties to let the gentleman have 10 days to pull a permit and have his properties torn down within 60?
I'm comfortable with that, with the next meeting, the first meeting in December, him coming back with an updated report. So if he's got 60 days to demolish, I'd like to at least hear the status of that next month.
Is it 30 days to demolish or 60?
10 days to pull a permit.
10 days to pull a permit.
And then 60 days to tear it down.
After to tear it down. I'm just asking for an, an update, because he said he's asking also to potentially salvage 134.
Yeah, no, I, I think we've said no salvage.
Saying no salvage?
No, he's had to tear it down.
Unfortunately, no.
Yeah.
No, unfortunately.
No.
No, we're, sorry. We're trying to hammer this out here.
Then I'm, I'm comfortable with 10 days to pull a demo permit and demolish.
Your honor, he's in a catch 22 of it, he did, was fully, fully aware of it when it was purchased.
We represent the public on those streets, we are also in the same catch.
Yeah, we, we owe it to the residents that attended the show cause hearings and have lived next to these properties to stick with policy.
And they've been more than patient on those streets.
I, I think this is a good compromise.
That's why I'm trying to be fair here.
Absolutely, they're very derelict and, and, and the neighborhood has been very patient.
All right, so 10 days to pull the permit to demo and then a 60-day completion. Is that fair? Does everyone agree?
So now what you need is a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yeah, I need a motion to make the change to these, to these two items of the consent agenda with these discussions. These two items changed.
And then an approval with that, those changes and the other ones.
Do I have a motion to change? More discussion?
Jimmy, repeat that, and clerk, repeat the motion.
Luck with that.
I was going to say, I'll make a motion to revise eight and nine to do it 10 days to pull a permit, 60 days demo on the consent agenda.
And you want to make a motion with that as well to, to approve the rest of the consent agenda minus.
We've, we're still on the consent agenda, we made the changes to eight and nine, we discussed the other ones that councilperson Aubrey wanted us to talk about. Is there any other discussion, we're in the middle of discussion, on any other issue on the consent agenda that we need to talk about? If none, then we need a motion to make the changes to the consent agenda.
That's where I thought we were.
I will second the very long motion by Alyssa, thank you.
So we're good to go on the consent agenda, now we have another discussion.
Further, further.
Okay.
I believe, Mike and I have been up here a long time. We've seen, our bids are typically cheaper than what you may get yourselves. We've just seen that over the years, that we do more of it, unless you do it yourself, you know, but which you're, I suppose are allowed to if you pull the permit. But all I'm saying is, when you go out for bids, we've found in the past, our bids are more, a better price than what individuals get for themselves. Don't waste time.
Any other comments? Any dissension to those repetitive motion changes and amendments? Hearing none. We have a consent agenda that just passed with all these various comments. Administration reports, thank you, gentlemen. Item one, PA 202 corrective action in retiree healthcare and pension system. Mr. Klobuchar, I read this, this seems very reasonable with the MERS package, it's very good.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you, I want to thank Lacy Christians and for all of her hard work on this. As soon as you pass this, Lacy will run down and fax this to the state of Michigan as it is due tonight, so.
Very good proposal, I think it's the most comprehensive one we've had in the last three years.
Again, we're required to do this under PA 202, so.
I have a motion to approve.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Support.
Any discussion, dissension? Want to beat this one up? Nope, okay, this one's good to go. Item two, President reports, PCK 6 dash, 68 dash 18 rezoning request for MD to M1 or RB. We've got to make our mind up on what letters to pick here, Jeff?
I got one.
So basically, the MD, if you guys might remember, was sort of a failed experiment in the approach 2000 of the mixed-use entertainment, which would have made sense if they'd allowed the gambling or the, the paramutual games to go on, it would have made perfect sense. And actually Wayne State came with a very, what I will call ambitious sort of plan to make it a pure sort of entertainment district. However, due to the fact that it is not and has been sold, and the trend, and based on what is actually in the ground over there as they have discovered, the most proper use of the former track site and most of that area around there is M1, which is industrial. It would be almost virtually impossible to have any kind of residential or really mixed-use stuff over there. And in addition, the, the property along Woodward Heights should prob, should go to RB, that is what the, across the street is. It will keep all the single-family homes that are along Woodward Heights and Maple Lane and keep the sort of Fenari condos in Conformans as well, and that property behind it.
I was actually part of that planning commission and that master plan deal in 1999.
Yeah.
And at that time, there was a lot of discussion about different venues coming into that whole area as well as the ice arena and the condo redevelopment there. At the time, in 98, 99, it was a lot of developing, developers talking a lot, weren't they?
They were, as the mayor and I well remember, they did a lot of talking.
Yeah, and that's.
That's all they did was a lot of talking.
And left us in a, in a, in a bad situation two years later. And of course, we all saw the downturn of the, of the economy. And I think God, we have a redevelopment plan in place at 20 years later to find a way to make the best of some property that otherwise may not be to be developed at all.
Yeah, just very briefly, even if there were to be houses or anything, they would sink into the earth.
Yeah.
I get a motion to approve this?
Your honor, can I comment very briefly? I was able to attend the planning commission meeting when this was discussed and it was well presented and thoroughly discussed. And I'm, I'm very appreciative of the hard work that went into this. So I would make a motion. I'll let Andy do it, I can't find my paperwork.
Move approval of rezoning, the PCK 68 dash 18 rezoning request for mixed-use entertainment to M1 and RB.
Support.
Dissension, discussion, any more discussion? We have, item two has been approved.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, again, it just, for the record, and I talked about this at the planning commission, and Jeff just mentioned it, but I want to say it loud and clear so that everybody gets it and remembers this. There is no way for us to do housing over there, Jeff's right, any kind of housing would have sunk. There is, there is soil contamination, there is no soil consistency or compaction over there. The Tri-County Commerce Center, one rests on 7,000 GOPIers, so it does not sink. It was the old Highland Park dump. Besides redeveloping this and creating some tax base and some jobs, we'll also be remediating an environmental problem. So this is, this is a triple win across the board, so grateful to work with Ashley Capital. I will miss the racetrack forever, I will really miss that bowling alley forever. I'm sorry to see those two entertainment icons go, but we'll do the best that we can and we will make lemonade out of lemons and we'll do the best we can to make something really good for our residents.
Okay, it takes us to the public hearing for the community block grant funds of 2019. I'd like to open up the public hearing for the program year 2019 Community Block Grant Funds, CDBG is the abbreviation. Do you have anybody who want to like to speak on this? Give your name and address.
Make sure you talk into the microphone, too, please.
Hello, my name is Kai Campbell Fox, I'm here representing Haven, which is located at 801 Vanguard in Pontiac, Michigan. Hello, good evening, thank you for having me here. I can tell you a lot about Haven, but real quickly, it's an agency that works with issues of domestic violence and sexual violence. If you have questions about any of the specific services that we provide, I can speak more to that as well. I wanted to let you know that last year, 2017 to 2018, we served 61 residents from the Hazel Park area. We go through and verify all addresses, so we know that. We had 12 clients in our counseling program, nine that we helped with personal protection orders, 36 that we helped with court advocacy, and four that we did start our forensic exams for. The support through the CDBG grant helps us help even more residents in the future. So in the hopes of helping Hazel Park residents access our services for years to come, we like to request money. If you have any, oh, is that working? Yeah, if you have any questions, you have the numbers for the whole county in front of you as well on the fact sheet. Yeah, any specific questions that I can answer while I'm here?
Do you have any questions for this gentleman? Any comments?
Your name was Sky, correct?
Kai, K-Y-E, yeah.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one last question, are you deciding tonight, should I stick around or are you?
Yes.
Thank you.
Council, do you want to make any changes to the presented CDBG funds?
Haven is a.
Comments?
Start the discussion, I mean Haven is a, an incredibly fine program, what they do. I know we've been asked for some of the monies in the past. I mean, I would support something going towards them, but I know we are very limited, the budget and this is always.
Yeah, basically, this is already spoken for in our budgeting process for code enforcement, it simply is.
Anything we can do in the future?
Yeah, I think next year we'll look and see if we can carve out a little bit.
Like a youth assistance.
Right, kind of like we do for youth.
It probably pays for every dollar you put in.
And this is, this is definitely. This is definitely a worthwhile program, but I think that we're gonna need to look at that in next year's budget because this is all.
Let's do that.
This is already.
I, question for Kai. Is there a specific dollar amount that you're requesting or looking for to support programming for Hazel Park residents?
Uh, there's not a specific amount. As I was reading off all the numbers of people we supported, it cost about sixteen thousand dollars and we're definitely not asking for that much. I know you guys have like a minimum thirty-five hundred or something, I think, that you can give to any specific program. Pretty much anything that helps support our programs. We get some like federal assistance, like with our shelter, but a lot of what we run on is donations, sometimes private donations, sometimes public donations, so. It's pretty much whatever funding is available from different sources. We go for grants. Yeah, because it's, it's expensive. All our services are free to all of our clients. By definition, survivors of domestic violence are considered low income by the federal government by definition. So that's why we're eligible for all of these grants. So that was the long answer to your question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kai. Just very briefly, Mayor, while I think as Councilman Licero said, Haven is a terrific organization. The problem we have is, is if you look at the time period when you guys started and Mr. Klobuchar started, we were getting about a hundred and fifty-five to a hundred and sixty thousand. And now we're down to eighty. So really, Kai, your beef is kind of with the feds, sorry, on this stuff. And really, they need to really give us more money so that we can do things like code enforcement, which is super important to the city and an organization like this where we can give a little amount to help pay for our, our own resident costs that might exist at Haven.
Does the council have any suggestions?
I have just one moment. I'm asking a question over here, sorry.
If we have a question.
Okay, so I want to thank you for coming today. I want to significantly thank you and Haven for the programs that you run and stress to everybody how valuable these programs are. As a victim of domestic violence myself, this is something that is invaluable and I'm sorry, I'm getting emotional. However, I was asking them, unfortunately, your request has come in too late for us to get it in the budget this year. However, I was asking them when we need to have that request for next time and I'm going to put it on my calendar so that I make the request as well and I want to get your information before you leave. In the spring, when we redo our budgeting, I definitely want to get Haven as, onto our CDBG because it's, it's super important to me.
I, I think that we may be able to squeeze off five hundred dollars out of this just to.
We have a requirement that there's only a, there's a minimum.
To start.
Right, so, right.
There's a minimum amount of, is, is, I said thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-five hundred.
Are you kidding?
Yeah.
Five hundred dollars is a good enough start?
It's not, it's not, no, it's a, it's a.
For the next time.
It's ours. It's, it's not.
It's not our rule.
It's the CDBG grant rule. It's not theirs or ours, unfortunately.
Yeah, if it would have been that, we would have done that.
Yeah. Thousand bucks.
We'll look for, you know, some way to generate some little bit of additional.
Do we have a private funder that we can maybe get that out of?
We can see.
Civic betterment.
No, you, you need to use this fund. We will make sure next year that we build the minimum.
We build this into the.
We'll build it in.
Well, I know we.
So we're, we're working on timing right now, which, which is the issue. It's not the lack of support or the misunderstanding of the value. It's the timing.
We, we've never, unfortunately, we've never given Haven any money and they show up here every year. So getting, you know, thirty-five hundred from us from next year will be, will be a big win. So, and it's not that we don't think that this is an outstanding program or we don't think this is a valuable program. We've given, you know, in-kind donations of equipment and phones and things like that to Haven in the past. We think it's a good program. What this is indicative of is a federal government that has continuously failed to meet its obligations to the state and local units of government for the past thirty-five or forty years. The CDBG fund, when I took over, was almost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year and that was down from what it was five years before I took over. Now it's eighty-four thousand dollars. So we're supposed to perform the services that we need to perform for our residents on fewer and fewer dollars of support from the state and the federal governments. So this is a worthy program. We'll build it into the budget next year and we'll start off with bringing thirty-five hundred out for Haven.
Your honor. Our budgeting is in spring, so if you leave your card, please, thank you so much.
Your honor.
Person Aubrey's got a question, then councilperson.
Don't leave yet. Don't leave. Okay, I ju, I just want to say while, while you're here, and I donate my checkbook with me, but I'm gonna commit to taking a month of, it's not much, but a month of my salary here on city council and donate that.
Any other councilperson, Holland?
I support Haven's work. It's, I know two people that use the services this past year and invaluable. I want to go down a different tangent with the CDBG block grant funds and what they were truly intended for and what unfortunately the economic downturn has forced us to use them for. I served on this board at the county for a number of years and the fun stuff, the children's gardens, butterfly gardens, playground equipment, other things that, the want list, the dream big list, we, we need to, as we're building our community back up. Get the code officers back into the general fund budget and start using the CDBG block grant funds to really enrich the community. Code enforcement do an outstanding job, but I would like to see our parks and more investment into the community with these dollars down the road. It's alike.
Right, I know. And, and I'm looking at all of that as all worthy things and I am the man who must be brutally honest with you with your financial situation at all times. And while things are a little better there and by no means good because, and I'll say it now, Michigan's system of municipal finance remains fundamentally broken. So while we want these things, we've gone out and we're gonna pump more money into parks this year through donations and through money and things like that than we have in twenty years. So it's, it's going, it's will be, thanks to Sutai Foundation, this will be the biggest investment in parks in the city's history. So we're doing great things and we're continuing to do great things, but we'll find other ways to do them other than the CDBG dollars. And can we probably find some way to raise, you know, Haven some money in between now and next fiscal year? We can't. But there's nothing that I can do right now, so give me a little bit of time to think and a little bit of time to come up with things.
And for, for the, for the future, I want Mr. Fox to come up here. Do you have an email address or a phone number to make donations?
Yes, I.
For the general public, please.
Yeah, for the general public. Our director of development, I think emailed Mr. Campbell. Her name is Blanca Fable. So her email address, she'd be the one to contact about development. So B-F-A-U-B-L-E at Haven-Oakland.org.
And we would like to put this on our Hazel Park Facebook page so he can, we can have that on there and get some individual donations made to this great organization.
Thank you very much. That's very helpful.
And it's the best we can do at this point and hopefully next year we can make some adjustments to our funds.
Yeah, we can. We just want to build that into the budget so we know ahead of time where the money's coming from.
We can't just drop it at the last second, I understand. I just didn't, it was a minimum requirement for you. Sorry.
No, I would have said the same thing to just do the, you know, the, but we might be able to find a way to do.
Right.
Maybe a thousand, not a civic betterment like we do for, we'll look.
I mean, there, there are sixty-one residents here that benefited from these services, so I feel it's the least we can do is to look into ways. But I thank you.
At least make Kai's time worthwhile coming down.
Right.
Try to find you some.
I got a little, I got a little quivery up here. It's something very near and dear to my heart, so I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Support.
Counsel, to me, I have a motion. Any more?
Move approval of the 2019 Community Block, Community Development Block Grant Funds application.
Have a support?
Support.
Do we need any more discussion? Any more dissension? We're all good? Okay, we have a block grant funds approval. Two, three, four, three, three, Eastern Link's show cause hearing. Is anyone here for the two, three, four, three, three, Eastern Link? I'm going to open up public hearing for two, three, four, three, three, Eastern Link. Anyone here? We're closing the public hearing for two, three, four, three, three, Eastern Link. Is the city council have a decision to take on this? I think it's pretty cut and dry.
Mr. Mayor, I would recommend we follow the demolition order as presented.
For the general public, this is a four hundred and fifty-seven square foot, this building that is way past its SCV, SCV and it's in really poor, deplorable shape. Do I have a support?
Support.
Any dissension? Comments, discussion? Passes, boards commissions, do we have any?
You may remember Raymond, who used to ride around on his three-wheel. This was his home. He's now passed away. So he, yeah, very nice man.
Very nice guy. Goes back many years. Boards commissions, anybody, anybody new business, any new business? Communications from department heads, we got them all in the back here. Is anyone wishing to come up and make any comments? Mr. Jones?
I'd just like to say we did start picking up leaves. We started on the local streets today. Still ask residents, please do not rake your leaves into the street. We are making one pass with the truck and any large piles put out in the street with a nice clean yard, we're gonna go around them. We're gonna have code enforcement come talk to you. We want to open up all the drains. As you can see, a little bit of snow over this past couple of days or so. Freezing rain, snow, all these bad things. So we're fighting against the clock. So we want to get through these routes. Every time people add to the issue, it fills the truck up quicker, turnaround time, we have to take a truck to Madison Heights, empty it and come back to get back to the route. We're racing the clock here before the snow is covering up and we can't do anything. So we do ask for the cooperation for the public. Please work with us. We are working on the no parking day, so tomorrow, it says Wednesday, no parking. Please move your vehicles and we'll be taking the large trucks down your streets. Also, we do have a sidewalk program going and it's come to a screeching halt due to the cold weather. So we've done work on Carlisle and Easterling. We're gonna try to do Patel, but we're, we're not gonna open up any more new work going further because of the, the cold temperatures at night, cement curing and that just doesn't work out too well.
And our new garbage cans, how are they going?
Uh, so far, they've been a big hit. We're, we're selling them through. You can purchase them at city hall. They're actually physically at DPW. We, we do deliver if anybody needs it delivered. It's a large cart. I think we're, we sold about thirty-two so far in two or three weeks of sales, so people have been in.
Maybe we should put one down at the city hall as you walk in and put on there. You can purchase the, if you are a resident through our city clerk or wherever you're selling them at. Or in the middle of city hall. Recycling, same thing with trash.
Mr. Mayor, for, for the record, I did speak with Tom today. He's going to Sakura tomorrow. We are gonna be lodging a complaint, this time a formal complaint about GFL and about their failure to perform. Again, one of the reasons why this company's here was because they allegedly had great capability and were able to deal with things on a large scale.
And save us a hundred thousand.
And, and save us, well, they did save us some money probably in the renewal process undoubtedly, but they also need to perform to the standards that they agreed to perform to. And I think yesterday and today was kind of a failure. And while they had been doing better, and I will give them credit for doing better after we had our last round of complaints, yesterday was a dramatic fall off the wagon event. And I know they had a truck that broke down. They had some things that were beyond their control, but this is a large company and they need to have the capacity to be able to deal with those things and do better. So we're gonna lodge a complaint tomorrow and again, we want to make sure that they know that we are serious about monitoring their continued performance.
What a record. I didn't hear about this complaint about yesterday. So if you want to fill me in.
Yeah.
So my garbage was picked up today at around four o'clock. Garbage day was yesterday. I called this morning because I was like, uh, I'm gonna, you know, hold out, hope that they're just gonna roll by in the dark tomorrow, you know, yesterday. And I called and she, the woman I spoke with at DPW said that they were sending trucks out today because they had a truck failure yesterday. Four o'clock.
But I'm not the only counsel.
And it wasn't just my block. It was all three.
They missed me for four weeks.
There was a, a breakdown and I understand that, but they need to be able to cope with this a little better.
Yeah, they need to come up with a better game plan.
Your honor.
Yes.
They came by in the dark on, on my block last night and my brand new expensive Ace Hardware cans were left in the middle of the street. I'm on the corner, so the first car that came around clipped my brand new cans. And there's still several houses that have.
They need to put the cans on the curb, put them in the area between the curb and the sidewalk.
They're in the middle.
Do not improvise and put them on the street.
Have the formal complaint. And I would like to see the written response. I think the rest of the council would like to have their written response within a very short timeframe here. And if they do not make the adjustment that they need to make, I think that we need to reevaluate their contract and the situation and maybe have them here in person at a hearing.
And, and remember, they don't work for us directly.
Oh, but they can get.
We're part of Sakura.
Apply the pressure through Sakura. Yes, we can.
I just want to make sure you remember.
As a, as a council, we can apply that pressure.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Tom, one other thing, since we've got everybody gathered, there has been some discussion of returning to collection of trash five days a week. Might lighten the burden. Tom's, there's a plus and minuses to it. I don't know if there's, if this is the time that anybody wants to comment about it.
I think that's something we should look at because it would be easier and they could collect it on the street maintenance day and it would be very fast and very efficient and very easy because it would be dodging vehicles all over the city. So that makes good sense to do that. But I think, you know, if we're gonna make their job easier, we need to know that they're going to perform and that performance is gonna improve and they may even should be cutting us a break in terms of what we're paying. So.
Yeah, that's not likely to happen in any way.
Right.
I gotta comment to that. I mean, we were paying Trangali and they did it for over a decade at the, one day a week and we didn't have that many complaints with them. They had it down pretty good.
We had some complaints.
Not as bad as what we've been experiencing, not even close. Well, besides. But still, even when they were, it's been really bad.
Actually gotten, you know, no one called my office, but this is all social media.
I gave you a break today. I didn't call you. I called you.
But we know that it's happening. We know people are displeased, so they need to do better.
Yeah, a couple neighbors messaged me.
Also, this is not unique in Hazel Park.
No.
When they, when they aren't picking up until eight o'clock, it's happening in every city.
And this is our previous contractors having the same issues in the cities that they pick up in and the other contractors.
Oh, for certain.
There is a labor shortage. Uh, there's all kinds of issues, so.
As somebody that, I, I, professionally, I stay in other cities often, so I see their collection times and I see that they're doing the exact same problems with other companies. It's not just GFL, but it's still not acceptable.
Now, one of the things they did say, and I backing them up, but the volume of bag leaves yesterday was extremely high. They actually told me they worked till ten last night. I didn't see them, but that's.
I saw them in the dark, but, yeah.
That's what I've heard, but.
They're working hard, but.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not actually angry with the men on the trucks. I'm angry with the organization of the men on the trucks.
Maybe they should have special.
Because I think those guys are out there busting their humps, but I think that the people at the top are not necessarily giving them the tools they need to be able to do their job.
I should say, they're more than eager to go back to five days. Like I said, we do have pros and cons. Back when I believe we changed it, we were like, hey, we're only gonna have garbage trucks in our city one day a week and be done with them. This would, you know, split it up. The city's already split up into five zones. We have our no parkings signs up. As far as, you know, getting the public.
If they can give us a guarantee that they're gonna do a very good and thorough job, I would not be.
Some of the pros they've also said would be they, they would have stability in those drivers. We would have the same drivers each week. Right now with these long days, they bring other drivers in after they finish other, other cities. I know Madison Heights is one of the cities they do. I know Madison Heights is one of the cities they do and they're in there, I believe, five days a week. I'm not far against this, whatever decisions you guys goes, we'll make it work.
They do Royal Oak as well.
Yes.
Yeah, we can look at this, I think it's, I think it's a worthy thing to look at, councilman. So, you know, we'll get with you and with Tom and we'll talk with GFL and see if this might be something that's helpful. It would certainly.
Let's move forward, let's see what they got to say, Tom.
See you in the morning.
Thanks.
Thanks. Any other department heads?
Department heads.
They'll fall asleep back there.
Nobody else wants to come up.
Thank you.
With the inclement weather, want to think of safe driving. Give yourself extra time getting to work or your destination. Roads are bad, give yourself some space in front of you so you can stop in time. Distracted driving, absolutely a no-no when the weather's even worse. Also, we do have an ordinance against vehicles unattended. It's not something that we typically enforce these days. That ordinance was made, I think, when we had a lot more stolen cars. But if you do warm your vehicle up, make sure it's locked, make sure you can do whatever you can to make sure someone's not gonna walk by and grab it. So don't let yourself be a victim. Thank you to all the volunteers, reserve officers that worked the Ruck 22. Sounds like it was a good event. I planned on being there, just wasn't feeling good and was wore out from the week before, so. Any other thoughts or questions about anything?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Fire chief? What's the arrangements for the Santa Claus on Tuesday? You got fire extinguishers for those jets on his sleigh? Alright.
Yeah.
Get him to grin.
Evening, guys, yeah, we'll be ready for him. They call us, we show up in one or two minutes.
As long as you bring him and we're not taking him somewhere, okay.
Well, we don't want to take him anywhere but where he needs to go.
Now, be over where?
The ice arena, yeah.
The ice arena.
Yeah. One thing about the holidays, they are coming quickly. Unattended stoves are a major cause of fires. So when you're cooking that Thanksgiving dinner, your holiday dinners, whatever they may be, make sure somebody's always watching those hot plates that are going on, oven, stove, whatever you're doing. Have a safe and happy holidays.
Thank you, chief.
Yep, thank you.
See you Tuesday. Tim? Glad you could make it, our new water supervisor.
I don't know if anybody else worked out in their yard, but I was pretty surprised to see my garden hose is all frozen on Saturday. So this would be a good opportunity to ask the public to be prepared that winter's coming and to properly winterize your house. Couple of items we will put on the website so people can have a good area for information, but check your outside water spigots and make sure that you do properly shut them off from inside so they don't freeze. If you don't have a shut off, they do make caps for them. You can place against the house to keep them from freezing. Check out your crawl space ventings, this is one of the biggest areas we have where a pipe might run near a crawl space vent, it tends to freeze and burst. Check your home for any potential issues that could be freezing. One of the ones that a lot of people don't think about is underneath kitchen cabinets or any type of cupboard that has plumbing inside of it. Plumbing's usually attached to an outside wall, which is usually cold. We get many calls from residents that there's water spraying out from underneath the kitchen sink. It is pretty amazing that it's inside the house, but it is up against an ice cold wall. Utility rooms, there's a lot of houses in town that have specific utility rooms. Even though the furnace is in there, they're usually not very well insulated, so do check your pipes there. Covering on them to keep them safe. And if you choose to be away for the winter, if you don't winterize your home, then you probably should have somebody check on your home, I would say weekly. We do monthly water readings, but if you get a burst inside that's not showing or nobody knows, that can run for up to 30 days before we'll know that your usage has been very high. So do have somebody check on your home. And if you do, in fact, leave your home without winterizing, just make sure you keep your temperatures inside your house warm and leave cupboards open that do contain plumbing so that heat will stay in those, excuse me, in those little areas to keep everything warm. Just something I thought about, last year in the month of January, we responded to over 21 calls for broken pipes after hours, so it is an ongoing thing throughout the winter. Just something for everybody to think about, we'll put information on the website so that people can read up a little further on that, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, that moves us to the city attorney.
Nothing, mayor, thank you.
Thank you. City manager?
Jared Gageo's birthday this week, happy birthday, Jared.
Happy birthday, Jared.
Happy birthday, Jared.
Any other comments?
You know what? Rest in peace Stan Lee, founder of Marvel Comics and, yeah, absolutely. I mean, Stan Lee's comic books were a huge part of growing up for me in my life and all of my friends. And he was truly a visionary and a genius and you see now the universe that he created being played out in movies all over the place and what a life well-lived and truly a genius who will be, I think, remembered for a very long time. So not my traditional kind of comments, but rest in peace Stan Lee and Hazel Park system of municipal finance and Michigan's municipal finance remains fundamentally.
Got that one in earlier. Just kidding. Anyways, councilperson Sullivan?
Happy belated Veterans Day to all of our veterans here. I come from a military family, so the military members in my family that have passed on, we said a nice little thought for that and just remember your veterans also during this holiday season. People that are alone, people that maybe aren't alone but might feel alone, there are elevated risk of suicide during the holiday season. So reach out to people, don't forget your neighbors. And thank you everybody for coming tonight, thank you heads of our departments for helping make this community better. Sorry you get to hear about our garbage all the time. And happy birthday.
Councilperson Helen?
Happy birthday, Jared, you and my sister both. Good thanks, Mr. Sherman and the foundation for continuing to invest in our community. Trees and parks are so important and it's wonderful that we've got this resource that continue to invest in us to allow us to grow as a community. This past week, I had a couple of fun things go on, I got to visit the former banner sign company at Muir and John R., it's now Color and Ink Studio. Wow, if you haven't been in there, you have got to check this out. This, the couple that are in there, their mediums are just fantastic and and they saw me standing there and I'm just, I couldn't keep my fingers still, I wanted to touch the art so desperately. And it's a wax, it's an ancient form that she uses, the Greeks use this medium and it was just so cool and they let me touch everything in there, so it was a lot of fun. Also, Tom Jones, thank you for signs of the times being relocated to the Hazel Park Historical Museum along with a piece called Hope, A Tribute to Robert Indiana. And this is a pretty special piece with a special commission story behind it, it's in the local paper. But the community is going to be invited to ongoing paint locks and attach those locks to it and this Thursday, the museum is open from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. We welcome the community to come out, it's a $5 donation for the locks. The money goes right back into after-school programs, which as everyone knows, the museum is, the building is, the schools. And the installation of that was the, we had water department, DPW, S&amp;A Concrete donated their time and materials and the Hazel Park custodians helped load it up and transport it so it could get powder coated, come back this beautiful shade of red. And it was so neat on Election Day, watching people stop, lock it up, park and pose for pictures in front of it and Tom Jones signs. So that was really incredibly special. I'd like to send my condolences out to the St. Clair Shores Police Department at the loss of their K-9 officer X. We have the Blue Light Service coming up on December 4th, which would have been my grandfather's 115th birthday. But this is an incredibly special service that recognizes the sacrifice made by the families of the men and women who gave their lives to keep us safe. I would encourage everyone who can to come out, you don't have to be in the law enforcement or firefighting community to show your support for these families. And unfortunately, this year, we're gonna have some new names being read. Thank you all for coming out tonight. I'd like to congratulate Atkins, Noth and Hinton for the school board, it's status quo, but congratulate them and the other candidates for running. And thank you all for coming out tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Another huge thank you goes out to the Sutar Sutaric Meyer Foundation and Stuart Sherman. And then, you know, also big thanks to Curtis Kitchen and Bath, they've continued to do wonderful things for us. Hope to see you all Tuesday at the tree lighting at the Viking Ice Arena. And with, you know, Haven, they have a sign in the bathrooms and around here, some neat issues that they raise about abusive relationships. So on that note, if you love somebody, tell them and if you have children, hug them every day and tell them you love them. Have a great night.
I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. The Hazel Park Nature Initiative had its second event today at the library just before this started. Native plants, native people, teaching people about the native plants here in Michigan that would have been used at the first Thanksgiving feast. So just helping our, we've been partnering with the library just to help people learn about the wonderful history of the plants that we walk by and don't really give a second thought to, the historical significance that they can have. So happy Thanksgiving, everybody. I'm really excited that Kai came out from the Haven. While we couldn't help him today, I am looking forward to making a donation and I'm hoping in the spring, we can definitely, when we go over the budget, see if there's a way we can support this organization. I have friends that have been helped by this organization, it does, it does great work and especially if it's helping Hazel Park residents, I want to make sure we can continue that mission.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving. Thanks for coming out. But we have for years sat here and oh, woe is us, we're struggling, we're having to do this, we can't do that. And it's been nice the last few couple of years to actually have some optimism. Am I right?
Absolutely.
So why are we so boring up here? When we got 300 and some thousand dollars going into a park for our kids and residents? Come on, people, let's just get with this, get excited about what's happened here. Along with some of the new vendors, vendors coming into our city doing exciting things. We can't just sit back on our heels anymore, we have to take advantage of what we got. Whether we like it or not, it is who we are, we need to take advantage of what we have. And thank you for getting that from Sutar.
It was my pleasure, sir.
Also, we have to make an incorrigible difference here. The gentleman said he wants input from our children. Let's take him to some of our elementary kids and some of our schools and get some opinions. Let them have a drawing contest.
I've already talked to the superintendent, we're gonna.
I didn't know that.
Yep, no, I already talked to her about this. And the cool thing about this park is that there are things for kids of all ages to.
Right.
There's like this all-weather sliding hill where you can use pieces of cardboard.
Drove over there to look at that.
It's the coolest park, it's awesome.
I drive past it twice a week, it's stunning. And also, the great thing about it is it suits everybody, like it's for differently able children as well as, as well as all school ages. It's lovely.
But I think that we need to just get a little more excited about this. For years, we sat back, wondered, well, how are we gonna do this, how are we gonna do that? I can't understand, why are we still there? Let's keep the optimism. I know we have a lot of things going on in our lives, we have a lot of things in council here that we have to take care of sometimes, but it gets a little overwhelming. But we need to kind of get out of our little box once in a while and take a look around. But with that being said, I think we need to go to exec session, happy Thanksgiving to all you out there and let's, we're gonna talk about litigation.
Well, he's not gonna be able to call in tonight, so there's one new lawsuit that I can brief you all on tomorrow. But we can skip exec session, but I'm gonna need you guys to come in probably the week after Thanksgiving for a special meeting to bring him in and then we can do, yeah, a little bit longer exec session, sorry. But Carlito called today, he cannot be here tonight and.
So he will be at this meeting?
He will be at this meeting, so we need to get all of you guys together the week after.
Okay, do you have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Have a support?
Support.
Any dissension, lead going home? Motion passes.
Hooray.